All right, just as a little introduction, this is not, as I mentioned, a public hearing. It was not advertised as a public hearing. What it is, is a public review. Public review and discussion where the commission and other elected officials in the room will discuss our budget and go over various ideas. If I find prudent as the chair, I may ask from the audience or allow comments depending on the circumstance. Though for time, we're considering this to be a shorter review that we want to do publicly in front of, well, the public. And so, to begin things off, here at five o'clock, we are, as it says, going to discuss the 2017 county budget. And to kind of hit off the topic, Commissioner Potter, would you start things off?
Yeah, what I would like to do, commissioners and the public, is go through a little bit of a review on the budget. Just before Christmas, in our last commission meeting, we held a public hearing in regards to truth in taxation, where it was proposed that we would raise our property taxes nine percent, which would generate about $450,000 in revenue. I believe, on the average, $150,000 home, that meant an increase of $13. And so, after that hearing, as very apparent, nobody ever comes to a hearing and says, "Raise my taxes." And I want you to know that I have that same feeling. I am not one that wants to raise taxes on myself or anyone else. But the interesting part was, as we finished the hearing and everybody left, and nobody saw, really, what the county budget consists of. And so, this is what I'm proposing, is the first of a series of opportunities for the public, the media, to learn more about government budgeting, and particularly, Carbon County budget. So as I start this tonight, I want you to know that this is not an inclusive report. This is an opportunity for you to see firsthand as our budget, our full budget is posted on our website. You can go in under Administration and Budgets. It is 29 pages long, and you're welcome to either pick up a copy here or view it online, and you can see where all the departments and the expenses are for the county. The other thing that you'll notice as we start into this, is that we did pass a balanced budget. But that balanced budget requires us to use approximately $6 million in surplus. We don't have surplus to go on and on and on, year after year. And so, there has to be a number of solutions that we will pose to the public. What are you willing to pay for? First of all, after we take a look at how do we increase our revenue? Second, how do we become efficient, or more efficient? And third, are there any other cuts that need to be made? Over the last five years as a commissioner, every year I have faced a three to four to five million dollar deficit. And we have passed those, made the cuts necessary, and now we are to the point where there's not a lot left to cut, if anything. But we will do our very best in review. Just by point of reference, when it comes to raising tax dollars, or having an increase in tax revenue, our current taxable value, or our current mill levy, or our rate, as proposed, is .002989. And that's based on taxable value. So, if you had a taxable value of $10 million, the county portion would generate $29,890. So you can see that it's multiple hundreds of millions of dollars in revenue, well, in taxable value, for any type of a significant increase in taxable revenue to a county. I also recognize that, you know, taxation can only go so far, as far as providing the needs and the services. So what I'm going to go through in this next little bit, is what we currently do. Now, you need to know that as a commission, we're not adding new programs. We've done away with things. We've cut, we've shrunk our, the number of employees. We've done anything that we could to continue to operate at the level we are. We've been spoiled. We've become accustomed to the mineral money dollars that have not only built facilities, but have paid for maintenance and programs to be in them. And now is a tougher time. But I will add that we all need to put on our smiley faces, because coal isn't dead. And one of the future discussions that we'll have will be in regards to economic development, the number of projects that we have, that we're working on, and the appeal to you as the public, to help us bring business to Carbon County. And we can be more than happy to share with you those things that we're doing. So let me just go through this with you. Seth did a good review last, at the last meeting, but I'd like for you to get a better understanding of where we are departments, and how the county functions. Our total budgeted revenue in Fund 10, Fund 10 is our general fund, is $15,074,000. I'm not going to read all the numbers, I'll use the pointer. If you want to know where those, what those items are, if you go to page two and three of our budget, there is a breakdown for every item that goes into that revenue, into that general fund, that makes up that $15 million. But I thought it was very interesting for your initial take, as we started talking about property tax. The budgeted property tax for 2017 could be $5,450,000. So there's a lot of other revenue that flows to us, from minerals, from the state, from the federal government, from grants, from fees and so forth, that help make up that $15 million. But you'll also see that even if we instituted that tax increase, we still do not cover these basic services, because the budgeted expense is the $15,778. Now, can we trim that? Yes, we can bring that particular fund into line. But here's some interesting facts, as you go down through there. You'll see the budgets for each of the departments. Again, and nobody took the time to stay and say, "What is it that our dollars really pay for?" So you can see the overall commission, you can see the overall court system, personnel, and on down the line. And again, if you go to the budgets, you'll see the itemized expenses for each of those departments, and how that plays into the overall operations of any particular department. You're going to notice that there are some, these are services that fall into health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. And so, there's not a lot that we can do in cutting these services out, because they have to be provided as part of our community. Here's a very interesting one, as you come down, and you look at where all, you know, some of the bigger expenses are. $938,000 for our county attorney's office. And let me go back and say that I'm not pointing or picking at any department tonight, or saying that these guys have to do better, or anything else. You just need to know that these are the expenses of operating Carbon County as we stand right now. So, you go down a little bit further, and we talk about building maintenance and abatement. That's the servicing of, and the maintenance on our buildings, which, again, we've built a number of them, based on our mineral dollars coming in. But we've also got the responsibility for weeds throughout the county, for the mosquitoes and the other abatement issues that go on. That department works year-round. They cover snow plowing, they cover everything that is outside of the road shop, as far as that goes, and the fairgrounds maintenance. It's a big budget. What are those items are we willing to give up, or what are those items should we pay for, be willing to pay for, has to very quickly become the question. You'll also notice that the line above that is the Children's Justice Center, or the CJC, as we refer to them. Questions have come up of, why doesn't the county do more for the CJC? The CJC is basically run off from grants. It is a mandated program, basically, that is funded to a high level. Last year, it took about $80,000 in county monies to support the Children's Justice Center. This year, because of their grants, it's down to $40,000. That's just one example of a program that's provided, a building that was built on mineral dollars, that their revenues are paying for, so that the tax dollars aren't, so that there'll be a building and a facility that is paid for them in the long term. That happened long before this commission was ever seated. And so, how do we help preserve them, even though they are in a deficit? And it's not a big one. As we go down, you'll see some of the others. I talked to the sheriff and told him I was going to, just for example, show you what it takes as sheriff's department and jail. These two numbers right here, the $4 million and the $2 million, are the six, $6 million, excuse me, one minute, $6,280,000 to operate our sheriffs and our jail. That is more than the property tax that Carbon County collects. So, what does the sheriff's office generate between those two departments? They actually have income of about $463,000, which helps minimize some of those expenses. But the total allocation that we have to make as a commission to operate those facilities is $5,844,000. So, there's a big, a big expense in there. The next one is the ambulance. Often I'm told, "Well, you get paid for the ambulance service. You come into the cities, you go out into the county, you bill the insurance, and everything is taken care of." Why is that a problem? Well, there's the budget numbers. 1.4 to operate, approximately, based on averages, in a good year, we'll collect about a million dollars. And we will contribute to the ambulance department $414,000 to operate the ambulance here in Carbon County. That does not include the expense of the East Carbon Ambulance, because they are so far out, and they operate another ambulance department at a very minor cost to help facilitate that.
Commissioner Potter, we do subsidize the East Carbon Ambulance. We do subsidize that one by paying, helping to pay, and also we cover when they can't cover as well.
And that's very true, and it's not in this number, it's in a separate line item.
It is.
So, we do, we do contribute every year to the East Carbon Ambulance Service. The next, the next one down is the Human Services. And I said, "Seth, what's in that?" He said, "That's our Health District, our Four Corners, and our Indigent Burials." So there is no revenue there, there's $372,000.
Can I touch on that just briefly?
Please.
The Health District and Four Corners Behavioral Health, they, similar to the CJC, run off of funding. And now, we do subsidize them, and our subsidy, or our payment to them, is compounded by the state and the federal government. And so, if we were to, as an example, decrease $50,000, they would probably have that $50,000 multiplied and lose revenue near $800,000, because of our decrease of $50,000. They, in their matches from the state and federal government, those numbers are dwindling. And so, they are living every year with less and less, and still expected to provide a similar service. They have recently, the Health District, through attrition, fortunately enough, decreased their personnel. Over the last five years, I think they've decreased their personnel by seven people. And they're still operating at a, how would you say, a similar level. Not offering all the same things that they did previously, but they've cut out some of their services. Just expressing the magnitude of the dollars that we contribute to them there.
Thank you. Next line is our landfill. It costs, on average, $349,000 a year to operate the landfill, to permit it, and to take care of the waste that the county generates. It generates about $51,000 in revenue, so it is subsidized, again, to $298,000. Can we make changes there? Probably. But that's the cost of taking care of our landfill. I'm going to skip down a little bit. These others are fairly straightforward. The Tourism Fund is Fund 15. Those funds are not generated through taxation on property. Those funds are generated through the hotel tax, which is the travel, or the TRT, and the restaurant tax. And so, they are specific in their use, they are set aside, and basically, in a lot of ways, a restricted-type fund, as far as what they can do. They live within their budget. The next one is in regards to, let me have moved it over a little bit maybe, leisure services, or what we call Carbon Rec. Carbon Rec is a wonderful program. It originally started out as a partnership between the school district, the municipalities, the college, and the Carbon County. Over time, it morphed into its own, basically, because we had the mineral monies coming in, to where it is now solely a Carbon County Department. And I've talked with Frank on multiple occasions, and again, this is not pointing out a problem with his department, this is just one, that it generates good revenue. You'll see that right here, they generate $191,000 a year. They try to make their programs totally pay for themselves, which is a good way and a good model to use that, because if you use it, you should be willing to pay those fees associated with it. Their total budget is this $653,000. So we're $464,000 every year, funding Carbon Rec, as far as their programs and facilities goes. Here's one that I pulled out, because in this summary that Seth prepared, it is not itemized. Again, you can go in and find all the itemized in the county budget in those 29 pages. But here's one that I broke out, a program broke out. So of the $191,300, $30,000, and this year, last year, it happened to be $35,000 of that, comes from the North Springs Gun Range. It then costs us an additional $139,000 a year to operate the North Springs Gun Range.
Commissioner Potter, can I ask Frank, we had a discussion prior to this meeting that, and I just wanted to clarify some of those numbers. I don't know, Frank, if you want to come to the pulpit and help me understand, because this is a little bit different than what we discussed, for the shooting range.
As far as the shooting range?
Just specifically the shooting range right there.
So, we actually, it was a little bit higher. We generated for 2016, it was 39,997, but that's, you probably haven't gotten the update since, I just barely got it from Scott on Monday. So, we were, we were 39,000. And, so the 2016 budget, I believe, was $116,050. So the subsidy for 2016, I, this is the, this is, you're talking about the 2017 though, right Jake?
Right.
Yeah. So I was looking at 2016 earlier today, so.
So how do the numbers that we talked about, are they different from this, or is this more accurate?
That's, after talking with Seth, that's, that's the accurate, that's the 2017 numbers. The 2016 numbers were, the budget was 116, and then we generated 39,997, so it was like $76,000 and change.
What is the, what, where does the increase come from?
We are looking to expand with, with different projects and programs, and, and so there's, there's going to be some additional employee costs and stuff in there to try and do that.
And that's all allocated to the range, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you Frank.
Anything else?
No, that's, I was just trying to connect what we talked about earlier with what I'm looking at right now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The next line is the Municipal Services Fund, or Fund 20. That is the fund that is a tax on the unincorporated property within the county. I liken it this way, I live in the city, I pay county tax, I also pay a municipal tax to Price City, and like all of you, Pry White Tax, and so forth, on your tax notices and your tax charges. This is the fund that basically would be the equivalent of a municipal tax, if you lived in one of the cities, that charge you a city tax. You can see from here that it has income of $3,215,000, it has an expense of $3,909,000. And these departments, you'll see, are planning and zoning, fire coverage, ranges, or range fire, and on down, that pertain to the county. If you live in the county, these are specific things that affect you. But a lot of those, we also provide the services to the municipalities. And so, the only point I'm making here is that, if you live in the county, your taxes are lower than if you live in the city. Even if we were to change, you can see there's $768,000 that the county funds into that municipal service fund. Even if we were to collect that tax off from all the property in the unincorporated area, your taxes would still be lower than if you lived in the city. So those are items that fall within that. Our redevelopment agency, that's economic development, senior centers. This is another interesting one. We have a wonderful facility, we have great people, we have wonderful seniors, and all of our communities are built upon the backs of those that have gone before us. But here is, here is an item that Commissioner Hope took a lot of heat on this last year, and all of us, we did, as we talked about, making some cuts and some changes in the senior center. So, right here, there's two funds, the Aging Fund and the Nutrition Fund. These dollars right here are what we receive in funding for our senior program. So that equals this right here, which is $334,000. So our total budget at this year for the senior center is proposed to be $1,127,000. So in order to meet that budget, we have to infuse $792,000 into the senior center, into those two programs. And again, I'm not picking on the senior center, it's a wonderful facility, and I'm glad that we have it. But again, if we have it, and we need to staff it, we're going to have to pay for it. Of that, he would say, you know, it's, it's the meals, it's the programming, and all so forth. But here's an interesting number for you. The total wages and benefits for the senior center, $777,000, or 68% of the budget. I'm not saying good or bad, I'm just simply saying, these are the costs associated with operating Carbon County. And what are we willing to pay for? And what are we willing to find ways to increase our revenue, more efficiency, or to make cuts in our programs and in our departments? Going back to this other side, here's another one that I broke out, on the fairgrounds. The fairgrounds, again, has facilities that have to be maintained, or, or you lose them. Our total fairgrounds budget is $811,000. That's all the facilities out there. And so, revenue that it generates is $80,000 a year. Here's the one that I broke out, as far as the event center itself. And this is not a true accurate picture, because on its budget item, if you go in, it's going to show like $65,000 in utilities. And Don, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the entire utilities on the fairgrounds. So it's more than just the event center. But, there's a $65,000 bill every year on the utilities on that fairgrounds. So the event center itself brings in $40,000. The cost out there, that the county contributes into that, is $230,000. Again, it's not a straight across, but it's a very expensive facility to have open, and to have available to the public. In addition to that, we could go on and break out, what does it cost to take care of the motocross? What does it cost to take care of our arenas? What does it cost to go, you know, as far as this time of year, it's ice skating? You know, what is it that we're willing to pay for? That's where I want this discussion to be. Economic development, again, we'll talk about that on another meeting. And the other one that I, I broke out was right here, on the airport. That is one that this last year, we have done a master plan on. We are now preparing to go out to bid for requests for proposals, or requests for operators, to put FBOs in. And the intent, based on our master plan, is that the airports be a break-even. And so, we'll be looking to do away with the $160,000 that it costs the county, in addition to operate the Carbon County Airport. One of the best airports in the state of Utah has, I think it's the third or fourth longest runway now. We were fortunate that we had FAA grants that finished our main runway. I mean, it is a prime facility that needs to be promoted. It's been identified in the master plan, some of the excess areas in there that we could use to promote commercial. And now the FAA also allows non-aeronautic companies to be part of an airport. So there's, there's a lot there that we can work on, as far as that goes. So, the bottom line here, then, again, is, you know, here's, this column is the revenue, including the $6 million from surplus. Here are the expenses, excuse me, this is the revenue, here's the expenses. We would have to balance that with the surplus that is there. The little bit of revenue that I broke out in this column, and again, it's, it's only partial, came up to be that $2,400,000. Here are the expenses, based on some of these bigger departments, or the things I broke out, is $9,600,000. And so you can see that what we find ourselves in, is an economy that has shrunk, mineral dollars that have been taken away or jeopardized, and that we have a need to make sure that we live within our means. I walked away from the budget hearing, and from, especially from the taxation, is, cut your budget. Live within your means. I also read an important article that talks about how municipalities and government can do things, maybe through advertising, through noticing better things that are due to us, delinquent taxes, other services that we have. And look for ways, not to just simply, you know, cut, 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 which we, we've done, and will continue to do, but to look for those other avenues. Commissioner Hope brought up, what other grants are there out there that are available that we might, for an example, utilize to increase our revenues? And so there are a lot of, you know, avenues that we need to go down. My desire, commissioners, is that, you know, between now and through this first quarter, that we continue to have these discussions. I would like to, you know, look to a point where we will have more of a public review and questions, if there are any, on a departmental basis, this is just an overview. I would like to very much bring to the table our economic development projects, so that, you know, people are aware of what is coming. Those big, long-term ones are always what-ifs, and, but I think that we have to, you know, go down that road of saying, "This is what we're working on. This is the diversification. These are the alternative uses of coal. These are the uses of our natural resources that we have here." And so, with that, Commissioner Miller, I'll, I'll stop down, and we can, you know, answer any questions, or take it whatever direction you'd like to go. But I appreciate every one of you that is here, because you're taking the time to become educated in what has to be done. I hate to be the one that's accused of never being able to do the job, balance the budget. We balance the budget every year, and it's not an easy job. And I'm not getting on a soapbox or asking for your pity, but I am saying this, get involved in this process, because there are some tough decisions to be made here. And I, for one, as an elected official, I'll be happy to make those. But, I would like for us to be progressive, I'd like for our county to prosper. I've stayed here my entire life and my business career, because I love the place, and don't intend to leave. But I need your help.
Commissioner Potter, I appreciate your presentation on the budget. This helps accomplish one of the goals of the commission, to be more transparent and more informative of where the money is spent, and the money that we receive through taxation and through other means. I think it would be prudent to further the discussion. As mentioned in the last budget meeting that we held in December on the 21st, we were hearing repeatedly, "Cut the budget, cut the budget." One individual actually apologized afterwards, when he found out that cutting it any further means cutting personnel. He apologized and says, "Well, maybe we don't need to do that." However, I need to, to present, you know, in the micro-budgets that specific businesses here in town have had, they have had to cut personnel. And should we be any different? I don't know. That's a really difficult conversation to have, to discuss items that not only affect the community, affect the lives of individuals who work for the county, but also the quality of services that we offer to the community, and what we're able to do. In looking at this, I see that we spend $39 million, and that we bring, sorry, I apologize, that we, no, that is correct. According to this, we're spending $39 million, and we only bring in through revenue, through guaranteed sources of grants and taxes, 32. And so, there's a big discrepancy there. Are we living beyond our means? Some would say that we're providing too good of a service. Does that mean that, that we're taking too good a care of our roads? That we're providing too good of a quality of care to our seniors? I mean, these are hard questions to answer. And so I appreciate Commissioner Potter's invitation to the community, to provide us with input, on what you think. Provide us with, you know, some input of where you, where you find value. Because, at the end of the day, Clerk Auditor Seth Overson has mentioned to us that we can, through surplus, provide for these things, as we are currently providing them, through the rest of this year. But not through the rest of 2018. Am I correct Seth? And so, I find some urgency in making some, some significant decisions sooner than later, while there is money to perhaps soften the blow. While there are funds to perhaps make the transition. Because the transition will be a lot more abrupt, if we wait until next year to make these decisions. these decisions. Commissioner Hope's, I've, I've spoken quite a bit, and I forgot to ask you what you'd like to add to the conversation.
I think most, most, most of the things that need to be said have been said. We did hear those that, that spoke out, and we have started implementing, we put on a hiring freeze, I think that's, that's something that we need to bring out. There is a hiring freeze at the county. So as people either quit, or leave, or whatever, we have currently a couple positions anyway, that we are not hiring, rehiring those positions. We heard that, that cry. So we are implementing some of those things that, that were brought to us in that public, public hearing, and we appreciate those comments. Those are, those are good, relevant things that we can, we can implement right away to start help, helping, you know? If, if you take one employee with wages and benefits, you're looking at a hundred thousand dollars, pretty close. Just depending on the, the employee, it could be more, it could be less, but a ballpark of around a hundred thousand dollars, that's significant. So I just appreciate the public, those that did come and speak out, and, and talk about some potential ways that we can, different ways we can look at the budget. And, and we are implementing some of those, we're looking at some. We're, we're trying to be proactive, and, and not wait until the end of this year, but, but trying to make some of those fixes this year, so that we don't eat as much surplus, and, and we can get on top of this quicker.
Assuming that the budget that was passed, the proposed tax increase of nine point two percent, assuming that we, we wield that hammer to its fullest, and we raise taxes and, and increase the revenue by nine point two-six percent, Seth, that's four hundred and fifty, four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is less than one twelfth of the solution.
Yeah, our, our budget, the way it is right now, we have an eighteen percent gap between revenue and expenses.
Other, other corporations, other businesses, universities, public and private entities, when they're faced with similar situations as this, local power plants, coal mines, they'll, they'll look through their personnel, which is one of their largest expenses. And they'll provide early retirement packages. I don't know if that's something that we'll consider, but it's, it's an item that a lot of other entities have, have commonly done. It may be something that we have to consider. But you can't provide an early retirement package in a year where there's no money. So if we were to consider doing that, that would have to be this year. Because if we wait till twenty eighteen, we won't have funds to provide any package, if we're unable to pay the current number of employees that we currently have. And so, I, I express that, not to, not to depress everyone in the room, but just to express the, the gravity and the degree of which, the, the seriousness of the situation, and what we really do need to consider and look at, so that we can be adequate stewards of the taxpayers' dollar here in the county. Understanding that there is no way that we can maintain the cert, the, the current level of service if we decrease the number of employees that we have. Which means that the current level of service also needs to decrease. And where, where is it that we, that we make those cuts? We have cut the fat, we have cut the muscle. And now, we have to look at more serious amputations. Hope I'm not speaking too harshly.
Things, things that we have to discuss, but no plans have been made at this point. I don't know if there's any questions, or, that's up to you, as chair, but I know we've tied you up now for about thirty-five minutes, but if there's questions, we can do them now, or be, I'll be happy to stay and, and meet with you and answer any questions, so.
We've used up about thirty-five minutes. If, you know, I think we could entertain two or three questions from the audience if you have them right now. If anybody has a question they'd like to, or a comment they'd like to make, feel free to raise your hand. Please come to the mic and state your name for the record.
I'm Rick Sherman with the Sun Advocate. I'm just wondering, commissioners, if people have suggestions about the budget, where to cut, what to cut? Where, how do they go about that? Where do they take their comments and questions?
Our, our commission secretary and the commission phone would probably be the most appropriate to, to gather that information, Sandy Lehman.
Okay.
They, they can email us directly as well. Those, the emails are online.
On the website.
Well, if, if they send the, to the commission email, all three of us will get it.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ken Williams, if you'd approach the mic.
I'm Cameron Williams, MD. I have three areas in my life that relate directly to the issue here. And I think you should know that I, on a personal note, really appreciate your efforts and understand how difficult it is to cut back in, in the face of previous successes. So I, I, I'm glad I don't have your jobs. So I have a personal hobby that involves the range quite a bit. I'm Secretary Treasurer for an action shooting club. Our membership is hugely concerned about access to those facilities. One friend today commented that his retirement plan was to continue his hobby, and that without that, he's going to sell and leave the county. So, I guess going back historically, before the range was built, we had a small range at Four Mile Hill. Our pistol club held statewide championships in that little facility. It had no personnel, it had no, it had a trailer there for a clubhouse and for storage of equipment and stuff. So, I guess what I'm saying is that part of any changes you make at the range, I would like to be involved in, in terms of making decisions about future access for the club that I'm involved with, which is insured through Lockton Affinity. We have full liability coverage, we have mature people who are well-known in the community who would take good care of the facility, and might even protect your facility from damage by other unauthorized people to use it on a volunteer basis, much like the previous Four Mile Hill range. Secondly, for almost thirty years, I was supervisor of the Carbon County Ambulance, East Carbon Ambulance Helper Rescue. I was the guy who signed off on all of their protocols for all of those years. I never charged or received any compensation for being the offline medical director for those years, but I understand the personnel situation pretty well. I understand the reimbursement situation pretty well. And I think, given the numbers that I'm seeing, it's going to be hard to improve that very much. I, I think there are just people who are uninsured, and people from out of the area who are uninsured, that we're just, that, that money for those EMS runs is probably going to be very difficult to capture. I'm not saying give up completely, but I do hear from people in the community that there seem to be long delays and no feedback from whoever's doing the ambulance billing. I had an ambulance trip myself a little over a year ago, and I don't recall hearing anything from the county in terms of my bill, or whether it was paid, or if I owed anything. So, a little more attention to medical accounting and billing might pay some dividends. I also have a contract with the county to provide medical care for the inmates at Carbon County Jail. I've been doing that since about two thousand and two. I have three highly educated, highly experienced emergency room nurses, nurses, who work for me there. They're all part-time.